We weren't thinking trees, but we're thinking natural grasses and flowers.
Just curious, how deep is the water in Lake Alice?
Brian might be able to tell you more definitively, but I think it's six.
Is it just a really shallow puddle, or what?
Pretty shallow.
How deep's the water?
Six feet, maybe?
About six to seven feet, but we have legacy deposits in there, so it all depends on point of reference, but on average about that.
Okay.
We didn't run out of...
Is there any plan to continue the overlay on the north and the west side? The road's pretty bad, and I understand that at some point there will be infrastructure, but that doesn't sound like it's going to be in a real distant, or, you know, in the future. So, my question?
Currently, we don't have a plan to do that. We have been going this sequence of getting supplemental water system and moving forward. The west side, yes, was reserved for reconstruction project. We can do it, we are just still trying to put that strategy together. So, I don't have a year when we can do that. We got general maintenance needs and everything, and maybe we need to look at that to see what we can do to prolong it. If we do overlay it, it might be in a manner such that if we have the funds available, we may secure it, thinking out loud here, to a time when we get useful life out of that pavement and then reconstruct it as well. So, there's a few options we do have when coming to that, but that's precisely why we did East Lakeside Drive. That's the route where this large, which is the ultimate 66-inch storms who were bypassed, was eventually going to go. So, doing some staging, like the west side and everything, knowing not currently, something we may have to look into.
Did you guys end up running out of money? Because when I understood, when this first started, that you had enough money to fit through the lake. This is, I mean, you're far from being even close to being around the lake.
I think in answer to that question, obviously, funding is allocation from within the city budget, and ultimately, there was never really a pot of money specifically for Lake Alice.
There wasn't? I thought there was in the grocery store. There was a grant or money from Lake Alice Grocery?
No, no, I mean, there never was.
That was never, that was...
There was never a pot of money, and the problem is, is that there's so many agencies that are involved. Once you touch water that belongs to the state, then you get into many different pockets. And so, like, I mean, what we were trying to propose was, you know, the answer to pollution is dilution. And so, you know, if we could have taken water from the Otter Tail River and brought that through Lake Alice and then discharged it back to the Otter Tail River, you would get, obviously, dilution of the issues that Lake Alice has, you know, and that would equally flush some of the sediment out of Lake Alice. But there's also issues that within, within Lake Alice and the sediment itself, you know, if you actually take away too much of the sediment surface, then you actually run issues of actually disturbing some of the things that are captured under that. And, and once you get involved with, you know, you're dealing with the MPC, you're dealing with the DNR, and then, you know, we're trying to equally look for grant funding, you know, from the state. And all of those things, unfortunately, it's orchestrating them to come to a point whereby you can actually get a project done and getting every agency to sign off and agree. And, and the original estimate for doing what we wanted to do to Lake Alice was like $10 million.
That isn't that much money, $10 million.
Well, probably...
It isn't that much money.
Yeah, other than, other than, obviously, yeah, other than, obviously, for us to pay that as a city...
Yeah, but when you guys started this, how many years ago? It was to take care of Lake Alice, not the sewer and the water and all this. It was to fix the problem in the lake.
Yeah, but it's...
And you're talking, well, too many agencies, and it wasn't talked about that way when you started. It was, "We're going to do, we're going to clean up the lake."
The, the lake has improved, believe it or not.
No, I, well, I do not believe it.
Aesthetically, aesthetically, you may not, aesthetically, you may not believe it.
It's very disgusting.
But, I mean, we are, we are putting some water in.
You guys are further away than when you started.
Yeah, $10 million is, is greater than the budget of the city that gets, that gets distributed to the taxpayer.
Not buy so much land.
We haven't bought any land lately.
Well, what about the Mid-Am?
We haven't bought Mid-Am yet.
This is not about Lake Alice right now.
This is, I'm talking about where the money, where the money is in the city.
Well, right, and, and so, this is an ongoing project, and you can certainly go to city council meeting and have these conversations. This is, well, we are, we are, no, there are no decisions made. People are listening.
Yeah.
No decision-making happening right now. People are listening right now.
There was at one time, American Federal, there was TIF dollars that were supposed to be used for this district? Were they used on the south side?
Yeah, you are, you are correct. My historical research, in 2011, there was a TIP district set up. Majority of those funds were spent for the project you see on the south side here in 2011. That is correct, basically. But, I'm not the finance director, so I'd have to do more research into all that, so that's to my understanding.
Hope you guys take the guy with paint on his face seriously. I, I would like to be able to just ask you guys, is, is that, as we talk about this, this whole issue of money gets to be a big deal, and I think a couple of the people that have talked before, this is issue of water quality. Is there, are there any other options that we can do? I mean, like, for instance, we divert the storm sewer, and then we try to pump water for other places. This issue of the storm sewer, is there a way to be able to catch that storm sewer water and make it acceptable into the lake so that we can actually run it without it being treated? And if so, what, what, what would we need to do to be able to make that happen? Or, and I guess, is it important? I mean, is there enough that comes off of that that it would actually make a difference one way or the other?
No, that, that's a very good question. Speaking of that, we talked about, one of the final things to do was to be to dredge legacy deposits, apply for grants and that. Condition of those grants applying and that is to do some upstream improvements, which you're referring to. For the past two years, and it'll be going before the council at the next meeting, we'll be reapplying for a grant to help supplement the cost. We were proposing a very large grid chamber to capture all these sediments and everything. That's actually the formation of the delta that you see up on the north side under the submerged conditions. But part of the things that a lot of members of the community, in addition to that, the main thing you want to look at is what you can do on the upstream to control the water, what's our, you know, to prevent any further degradation, which you're viewing right now. Part of that would be looking at the watershed, our MS4 program that we have details and kind of coincides with a lot of things that we're discussing here right now. Water quality issues, what can homeowners do, phosphorus free, fertilizers, public education, how you even mow your lawn. Clippings that go onto the street will go in the storm sewer, and that provides nutrients when the downfall effect is your lake itself. So, there's a lot of things, some may consider minor, but in great numbers, it does have an effect on the water quality outcome that's eventually discharging into Lake Alice.
First, I want to say thank you for coming. I used to live over next to Grotto, and they put in public restrooms there, and it seems there's a lot of families like mine that love to use this lake. And I was just kind of curious, is there any talk about possibly putting in public restrooms here on Lake Alice?
Short answer, no, that hasn't been talked about. We haven't had that request even, but there is plumbing at the warming house, so, I mean, we could maybe look at accommodating some public restrooms in the warming house, you know, year-round. But to build a new bathhouse at Grotto, Adams Park versus Lake Alice, it's, it's the number of users. Granted, there are a number of walkers around here, but there are a lot more users at Adams Park.
I have a question based on Brian's comment about fertilizers used on lawn, and Karen, I'm going to put you on the spot. I believe that, like, two years ago, your beautiful Fergus Falls put together a couple-page document on some suggestion, suggestions of what we could do to Lake Alice. And if I remember right, I just, I think it was, there were great suggestions, but I don't think we necessarily did anything with them. And I'm wondering how, you know, Brian's comment about the pesticide or the fertilizers on the lawn, and how do we go about, this is a question for everybody, but could you just talk about those, Karen? And then, how do we go about making a commitment as a community, as a neighborhood, that we are going to maybe reduce the fertilizers we use, the runoff? That's something small again, but it's something that we could actually achieve to do. And then also, talk about rain gardens and what that might look like in the average front yard, and then maybe there's a way that the city could, I'm just thinking out loud, but maybe sponsor a program to have some matching dollars for people that they wanted to put a rain garden in the front yard. Just things that we could actually achieve. But Karen, did you want to talk about that at all?
Sure, I'd love to, and I wanted to second what Brian was saying earlier anyway, that I think the best solution really is to slow the problem down from the upstream end rather than trying to fix it on the downstream end. So, things like rain garden, how do we, how do we manage our own properties? How do we work together as a neighborhood to reduce how much is flowing into the lake, I think makes a lot of sense? So, there are all kinds of things we could do to, for education, we could create flyers, we could hold workshops for the neighborhoods, and I think people, I think people could work together to create things, for instance, rain gardens. So, that's just a way to hold water on the land instead of letting it runoff. So, when water moves, it picks up all kinds of stuff that we don't want in the lake, and that includes things like grass clippings. So, if we can create rain gardens so that the water sits on the land, sometimes we work together with neighbors and say, "Well, what runs off of my roof runs onto your property, we can catch it there." So, a lot of ways that we can do that. And I like the solution to that a lot more than flushing the system out and washing it downstream, because I think that fixing the problem, preventing the problem from happening is better than trying to fix it on the downstream end. So, I'd really support that.
And I wonder if anyone else has any ideas of how we actually, I, I, what I'd love to see is, I'd love to see a commitment from the neighborhood that they, you know, the neighborhoods, that they're not going to use the, whatever the fertilizers are that are known to cause contaminants in the lake. Quite honestly, I think it's a good place to start, but if it's, you know, this is maybe more the most obvious place in town where, where you see the signs of that. But if it's not good for Lake Alice, it's certainly no better for Otter Tail River. So, I think if we start here, I think as a community, we can just make a pledge that we're not going to use those contaminants for fertilizers. And I think there's got to be some, some simple ways that we could assist as a city as far as if people wanted to do rain, there's got to be grants out there for something like that, or just, we can explore that. But I'd love to work with your group, Karen, and kind of have some...
I would love that, and I think that Lake Alice is in a great spot to be able to sort of model the way. There are a lot of storm drains from not right around the lake that wash into Lake Alice, but if Lake Alice residents take a hold of it and say, "Look what we're doing to protect the lake," and then model that for people in other parts of the city that are also draining into Lake Alice, so...
Can I just ask you to explain the rain garden? Just explain a rain garden.
Explain a rain garden? Yeah, good question, thanks. A rain garden is just a shallow depression in the ground, and you put it, like, wherever the rain comes off of the roof of this building, which I think is on the corner over there where some of it comes off, we would create a basin there, a recessed garden into the ground to capture that water. So, the idea is that you hold that water there, and it can either soak into the ground or evaporate off, instead of flowing over the surface and picking up pollution and taking it to the lake or the river. So, wherever we can find a place to hold water on the land, it's good for water quality. And we can plant them with all kinds of different things, you know, I'm a native plant geek, but there, you know, people put shrubs in them, people put grasses in them, people put all kinds of flowers in them, so you can sort of tailor them to look the way you want them to look.
I have a question for Karen. What have you learned from the water gardens that we have installed in Fergus Falls, ways that they could be done more effectively?
Yeah, well, it's a good point. They're not an exact science, and so, when you build one, the idea is you want that water to soak into the ground. So, the water, we want it to soak in in 24 hours, shouldn't stand longer than that if a rain garden is working correctly. A lot of times when we build them, they don't work correctly right away, so the soil needs to be amended, we can fix those, or sometimes it takes a little time. There's also maintenance involved. If you look at the one out at Grotto Park across from Dairy Queen, it's working fabulously, but for me, a bunch of weeds have come in around the edge. It needs to be maintained. So, these aren't things that you put in and you walk away and you're done forever. There is maintenance that goes along with that. You need to maintain them as you would any other garden. If you're capturing water off the roof of a building, it's usually pretty clean, there's not going to be a lot of grit in it. If you put one somewhere where you are capturing, say, the, the rain that washes off this parking lot, look at all the things on the parking lot that's all going to wash in. That would have to be manually removed occasionally. So, there is some maintenance with them, but I think if we do some education about what that maintenance is and, and find ways to work together to get that done, I think it's doable.
Could the city install a rain garden around the perimeter of the lake rather than having the homeowners?
Well, there's a difference between rain gardens, which are these recessed gardens, and buffers, which are planted more like a fringe around the lake. So, a buffer, it's also vegetation, and when the water washes down the slope of the lake, it goes through that buffer, and it slows the water down, and then the pollution kind of things settle out. So, they're two different things, but both effective for water quality.
I'm going to speak a little bit, and see where I go with this. First and foremost, the whole city is a watershed. I just want to emphasize what Ben was talking about there. The whole city, we should be paying attention to the water quality that we let go. And then, the part about us being involved or proactive, and the agencies that are very frustrating, it's frustrating for all you guys up there, and it's more frustrating for us because we don't understand all the places we're permitting happens and all the reason. Nonetheless, that's our government, that's the process that we need to go through. So, I'm thinking about us being proactive here, and we're going to go out to those agencies and we're looking for money. Lots of people are looking for money. If we stand out in the crowd, we're more eligible for those funds. Is that accurate? Is that accurate? If we, if we shine, the MPC, whoever is going to be looking and say, "These guys are working on this," this is a better candidate for money.
Thanks, Bert, and real quickly, I'll introduce myself. My name's Andrew Brem, so I'm the city administrator here in Fergus Falls. My experience with state agencies and now multiple states is that any time you can have a local participation, whether it be financial match or buy-in, that always rises to the top in terms of initiatives and projects that state agencies will support. So, you're exactly right. If we can show that there's that local effort, local initiative, local buy-in, those things always rise to the top in terms of being preferences of state agencies.
And if I can add to that, too, the past, as I mentioned, I'll be before the council, and the council's approved soliciting for the Clean Water Legacy Grant for these chambers, and that was a joint application with West Otter Tail Soil and Water as well. So, any opportunity we can to enhance even more, I think that'd be great.
Bert, I think you're going somewhere with that, though.
Was I going somewhere? Well, yes, actually, we're going to start talking about that now. And what I'm talking, and so, I would like to say, as far as this proactivity, thank you, Ben, someone sent me out there, is, how about if we have this, we have workshops? We don't have just those little comments from Karen about rain gardens. How about if we just look into that as a, as a neighborhood here and in relationship with the city, so that we're jointly doing that and paying attention to where would be good? And it may not be, we may have to help that person in that yard, because that yard where there's a lot of runoff is, you know? But look at that as a neighborhood rather than individuals, that proactivity. So, as a neighborhood, we can make ourselves much more eligible for the big strokes, which are, I mean, it may not sound like a lot of money, but I actually have looked at the city budget from time to time, and this is off on a tangent a little bit, but there was not too many years ago that there was something called local government aid, which does not exist right now. So, there was more of a partnership with the state than there is now. We're on our own a lot more. Is that accurate? Again?
It's not, it's not accurate.
It's not accurate? I'm wrong?
I don't mean to correct you, Bert.
No, I wanted to correct.
Local government aid does exist, but we are working on a reduced level of local government aid. Local government aid as a program peaked back in 2002, and we've done a strong, or put together a strong effort to lobby for those funds to return to that level ever since. We're still not there. We did see in this legislative session, a little bit of an increase. We're going to see about $40,000 additionally in next year's budget from the local government aid program, which is money directly from the state of Minnesota, but we're still not to those 2002 funding levels. So, obviously, with inflation and rising costs, we are behind, but the program is still in place.
On the, on the rain gardens, I think that's initiative that, you know, probably, you know, I think we've got to look at kind of some of the things that we can do effectively, and I, I would equally admit that I think, like Alice, in, in the enthusiasm to try to do some other things in the city, you know, I would, I would admit that, like Alice, if you want me to use that microphone, but terribly sorry. But I do think that Lake Alice, you know, sort of fell between the cracks in terms of not being as higher priority as it, it should have been. There was an emphasis at the beginning, and then it sort of dwaned because other things kind of took over. And so, I think, you know, in fairness to the residents around Lake Alice, of which I used to be one of them, you know, that obviously is something that we've, we kind of let, let it all drop on. And so, we apologize for, for that, but I think, you know, there is rejuvenation, there is kind of energy now to try to get things done and be effective in what we do. But I think, coming back to the water gardens, I think those are projects that are, you know, cost-effective to get done. I mean, we recently did one, obviously, behind City Hall to capture runoff from the administration building, where a lot of these people obviously reside, and we meet occasionally. And that was done in a cooperative collaboration effect between a service group and then being able to apply for some grants and, and the city. And so, I think maybe that's something that, you know, we've got to start with some small things that can happen and where people can actually see some positive effect. And maybe that's where the rain garden is, is something that, that could happen. And, you know, city resources, and we, we have a wonderful grant writer now at the city who, who has the ability to write in a way that helps us get grants. And, you know, he's actually pretty much paid for himself by being able to write, write grants, and that's, it, there's a unique way in writing for grants. So, I think that's probably an initiative that we've got to actually go for, is trying to get some rain gardens around Lake Alice, particularly on all, obviously, on the outfalls.
I think you said what I was just about to say. I think Lake Alice got fallen through the cracks. About three years ago, Lake Alice was turned into a swamp. Everybody's forgotten it, nobody seemed to care. We had a meeting, and the day after the meeting, there was at least eight to 10 city employees up to the weed wagon, did more on that day, and they'd done it all year. And it looks like now from this meeting here that we are moving forward, Lake Alice is back on the calendar, and we just want to appreciate it.
You got the rain garden, Terry, okay.
You got somebody else here? Let me get the mic up here and hold it.
Yes, I just wanted to say it's not a disruption, but it should be a clarification of everything, that as a church, we are the church, those of us that believe in Jesus Christ as Savior and Lord. Preach the sound doctrine, preach the word of God. You, I, the entire church, Lake Alice, and the entire community, and the entire nation will be okay. Period.
Thank you very much, and I just want to let you know, this is a several thing that's going on here, it's just in our, in the, in the St. James parking lot.
Well, the rain garden, I'm assuming the city will want to have input as to where they're put. I mean, we can't have everybody here going home and start digging a hole in their yard. I'm guessing the city will have some input as to where it is and how big it is.
Yeah, you are, you are correct. It depends on what water you're treating. Are we treating water from the street? Are we treating it from your, your private property? But a common thing with rain gardens is a curb cut, absence of a catch basin. But then, the other component, huge component of a rain garden with clay soils we have here, there has to be an underdrain system as well. Hopefully, there's storm sewer. So, there's a lot of criteria. Plus, with it's in the right of way, I'll have to admit, you know, the main thing that affects the longevity of our streets is having a dry subbase. So, that's one thing we also need to take in consideration when we're building a lot of these, that we have it in the right location or the best location. So, yes, we would have some input on that.
Anybody else? Oh!
Karen, could you speak to the, a rain garden for residential? I mean, like, for people to capture their gutter, you know, their rain gutter water? I mean, that's something that they could do in their backyard.
Absolutely. We see a lot of this in the Twin Cities area and a lot of other communities, the size of Fergus Falls, we see a lot of these. They do them in the boulevards, they do them up in the yards. It really depends on where the water's coming from. So, I encourage people, when it's pouring down rain, go out in your yard and see where the water's flowing. Where the water's flowing, that's where we want to intercept it. So, we think about if it's coming off of a gutter off the corner of your house, if there's a spot we could put it right there to catch that water, that's the right spot for it. So, absolutely, we see them in residential settings a lot, they can be very small, and for people who like to garden, they're just another flower bed in the yard.
And also, another opportunity to put pollinator gardens in for the, we did the Monarchs, there's Monarch tagging pretty soon out at the Prairie Wetlands, and that's another really important issue is pollinators and it's some double things. I'd like to make a proposal about this rain garden thing, so we actually have a handle on it at some time in the, in the growing season yet this year. We have a preliminary meeting and look for interest and try to address this all over the city, actually. We can focus on here, and then set up some workshops during the winter, so when the, when spring comes and we can actually apply that, that we've actually got some, some energy and some knowledge going out into our community to be, I mean, that's very proactive. We have to have that, we've heard a lot of, there's some education that needs to happen.
Yeah, Bert, I think that's a good idea, and also, many of you may not know, but the city has a newly formed committee, it's the Natural Resources Committee. Karen, Terry here is the co-chair of that committee. I think that's something they could go through, start at that level, come to the city council. And, and also, I, I'm not sure, but maybe just even something as simple as a flyer that could go out, starting with this neighborhood, this, this water district, if you will, is what, what fertilizers are acceptable and which, what fertilizers aren't. I mean, maybe just start with basic information. I don't know if people even take the time to think about that when they're going out to fertilize their lawns, but, yeah, I think it could start, like I said, Karen's the co-chair of the Natural Resources Committee, that'd be a nat, a good place for it to start. And I'd love to see a pledge by this neighborhood that they're not going to use those fertilizers on their lawn.
In light of that, Ben, I think both you and Anthony and the engineer here said this, that I think the issue that we, we have as a neighborhood is to be able to have a, a plan with real benchmarks that say, "If you do this, we'll do that."
that say, if you do this, we'll do that. If you do this, we'll do that. And not have a situation where people run out, build rain gardens, and somebody comes back and says, oh, man, that isn't where we needed it. Or we didn't do it that way. Or we build them, and then the person writes the grant, and then finds out that once the rain gardens are in, they don't count for the grant anymore. It's all got to be part of it. So the question that I would have here is, what is the chance to be able to have, and I know you guys have talked about this before, a master plan for Lake Alice that would have these things actually a part of it, where we could have these benchmarks, where we could say, yeah, we did this, we did that, and move along with it? Is that reasonable? Or is that something that just gets to be too expensive or too unwieldy? I just speak for myself, but I think it's totally reasonable. And again, Karen, your beautiful Ferguson Falls at the time put together that two-page document of some, you know, achievable steps that could be taken. There are plans as far as Lake Alice. I would just suggest that we can, maybe through the Natural Resources Committee, come up with a list of X amount of things that that could be done to, you know, by the neighborhood and by the residents for this lake. And then, of course, run them through Brian's office in the engineering department and just make sure that they're on board, bring it in front of the city council, and then we'd have a plan. Of course, it'd have to, maybe a little bit more complicated as far as the grants and such, but it's something we could put that in there as well.
I'm not certain if this was talked about before I came, and if it was, just somebody say, yep, it was, and we'll leave it at that.
Yep, it was.
Thank you very much, Ben. In my mind, there's rain gardens, and then there's rain gardens. And the translation of that statement is, I think they can sometimes look quite scruffy. And Lake Alice has always been, in my mind, a focal point that you'd like to take people who visit town to see, to drive around and marvel at it and the houses around it. So in the vein of the education that could be given to the community, I'd like to see examples of, you know, rain garden number one, rain garden number two, rain garden number three, this is what you put in number one, this is what you put in two, and this is what you put in three. And in three years, this is what one will look like, this is what two will look like, and this is what three will look like. So, because I don't want them to look scruffy. Thank you very much.
Just a point, could we go to the stores and let them have a display that shows what fertilizer can be used in certain area like across here? Because I wouldn't know what I could use and what I can't use.
Yeah, that's a good point, Karen. I don't know if you want to talk about this. I was told by, I've heard conflicting reports. Some people say that you can't buy the stuff that's bad in Minnesota, and other people say, no, you can go out to Home Depot and get it. So I, yeah, it's great, Lorraine, great point. I don't know the answer to that. That's why I thought maybe just a flyer of some sort of, some information.
You can't buy it. It's legal in certain situations, but by and large, phosphorus is not legal to apply fertilizer on your lawn. There are exceptions. That's how they get away selling it still. There are exceptions. If you have a chemical test that shows that you are ashore to phosphorus, or if you have newly planted lawn, then you can. But there's no one policing these things, and there's not good education about it either. And so people continue to buy what has phosphorus and apply it, and then that ends up in our lawn. So I think education is the right way to do it. It's going to be available for sale.
And I would say, in general, people over-fertilize, which is generally the biggest. Generally, people over-fertilize.
Click it on.
They turned it off, Bert. Why would they want to do that when I'm speaking? But in general, people over-fertilize, which is also another problem. So you get additional runoff. And I do think that Kiwanis, when they do their fertilizer, they do sell two different sorts, you know, one that's kind of like a Lakeshore lawn. And I think people do forget that how far away you can be from a body of water and still affect or impact that body of water. But I think equally, if we could do something in that northwest corner of Lake Alice to capture, that's where a lot of runoff occurs. And maybe the other thing is, we've got to quit salting, you know, the Lake Alice, because all that ends up in there, too. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, talking about winter salting, yeah. But you've got to promise you're not going to sew us if you slip and trip.
I was just going to mention that if you drive by the VA, they have a little pond up there, and it's aerated, and it's lit at night, and it looks very nice. Lake Alice used to have two aerators. If you go back and look in history, I don't recall what year it was, it was way before my time, but it would, to put two of those in the lake would be very nice and to light them up. I was down to Pierce, South Dakota, oh, back in October, and they, too, have a pond, and they built a bridge out to their island and had the island lit up in the bridge area. So maybe that's another thing that we can think about with connecting the shoreline to the island and lighting that up.
And if I can speak to what Mrs. Mullin was referring to, she's referring to her conventional wet sedimentation source pond. And a properly designed one, such as that, you're required to have three feet of standing water in it. And by the design, that's the water quality feature when water enters into a regular stormwater pond. Just to point that out, very similar to a rain garden, but different operations. Back to the supplemental water system, the council were trying to achieve that water appropriations permit from the DNR. We were considering that, too. With that system, we were going to be installing a large pipe all the way to the north end. And part of that component for the release was to provide that aeration. But we were also speaking with and working with other communities, if we had that opportunity, could we install some type of fountain effect with lighting and everything, too? So that was, we haven't, once we get the permit, we get to final design, if and when. But that was a component of that improvement.
I'd like to go back to when you fertilize your yard. Now, there's several countries or companies that have fertilize your yard. Now, those are all safe fertilizers, I assume. True Green or Pro Lawn. Would those all be safe fertilizers? Would you have to inquire on that? You know who I'm talking about? You have True Garden or True?
True Green.
True Green and Pro Lawn.
True Lawn and Lawn Pro.
Are those companies that have to have certain kind of fertilizers? To do your, yep.
They're regulated by the Department of Ag.
Okay. Okay. Okay, this is what I was wondering. And then also, you said, sometimes you can fertilize your yard too much. What about the city fertilizing their parks?
We don't.
You don't?
We do the ball fields, but we don't the general.
You fertilize a ball field?
Yeah.
Okay, what about state hospital?
We don't.
You don't fertilize. And what are they doing with these tanks that they go around? Are they killing, just killing weeds?
Yeah, no fertilizer.
No fertilizer ever. Don't get interested.
Because if the grass grows, you've got to mow it, and that costs money.
Well, do you know how much you guys mow up there? It's crazy.
They know.
I mean, that yard is so tailored beyond any yard in Ferguson Falls. Ridiculous.
Manicured.
Manicured, yeah.
I say it looks good.
It looks good, yeah. You know how big it is?
Pretty big.
Three football fields.
I'm just going to do a little summary here, a little reminder, you know, that we've got the city and the government, and we've got Lake Alice Neighborhood. And we've been going for almost a year now, and we can't, we've, we're here now because of collective efforts of about eight people meeting every month. And in being, learning how to communicate with each other and being more expressive and talking with the press, that's why we're here. So I'd like to invite you to make this Lake Alice Neighborhood group a part and in relationship with the city. I mean, we can have all these conversations here, but we need to have a process to go through it, to follow through. If we're going to do this education, where's our go-to place in the neighborhood? It would be great to have a little more participation. We go through a Facebook page, Lake Alice Neighborhood. You can join that there, and we announce the meetings. We get a little bit more active meetings. We'll need to change the day, but that's not a problem, because we've got about 45 minutes on Thursday, six o'clock, the first Thursday of the month. So we'll be here, what's the date, the fifth, third? I can't remember what it is. What's the first, Thursday of this month?
Fourth, third.
The third, right. So we'll be here at six o'clock on the third, right downtown, right under the church here. And our conversation is about Lake Alice, and we could use more input. There's a, there are 250 street addresses in our immediate neighborhood. That's how many people live around the lake. It's one block outside all around. So there's a lot of us. And just imagine if we had 20% of us participating on a regular basis. It'd be a lot of people to do that proactive stuff. And maybe the work wouldn't be so daunting. It wouldn't be, in fact, if we had more people involved. So that's our ongoing invitation, just do all that, bring this information. Now we go from when this is over with here. They've heard us, now we need to continue to communicate. Would that make sense to you guys?
Thanks, Bert. That makes perfect sense to me. And I just wanted to say thanks to you, Bert, and to St. James for hosting this tonight. And also, thank you for the, your efforts to help the city with that vacant lot over there, the building that needed to be taken care of. I know you guys had, played a big role in that happening, and we look forward to seeing a, you know, a parking lot that can be used by not only your church, my church, our church, also Lake Alice and the whole community. So thanks, thanks on that. And I don't know if anyone else up here had anything to say, but I just really did want to say thank you guys for coming out tonight. And it's very nice to, you know, we joke about interactions with people, and I know you guys have some concerns, to say the least, about Lake Alice, but it really does mean a lot to me and I think to everyone up here to have a civil dialogue and to be able to talk about these issues. And I think there are some things that we can actually get done. They won't be, they won't happen, you know, we're not going to fix the entire lake problem tomorrow, but if we do some things like address the fertilizer, get some information out there, and then also the rain gardens, I think it's something we can, it's a goal that we can look to next year, have a program in place that the city can help the residents of this neighborhood with rain gardens. I think that would be something that we could hang our hats on, say we're actually making steps forward. So anyway, thank you guys for being here tonight.
Any other questions or comments?
Bert, real quickly here, I'd like to.
Go for it.
I'll echo what the mayor said. Thank you all. I look forward to working with you on solutions as we move forward. One last thing that I wanted to cover, and I'm going to put our city engineer on the spot, but I get a lot of questions about this crossing right down here by the railroad tracks. You see, there's barricades there right now, and I know a lot of you walked through this area. So I'm going to put Brian on the spot and have him answer as to why the barricades are there, what we're working on, what we need to do, and hopefully, that's helpful for all of you.
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to thank you as well for this discussion, and I'd like to invite people to come on down, and I enjoy discussion. You know, overall, talking, I think we all have a good, general understanding, and how we can get there, I think we can. Yes, this crossing over here on the railroad, if you recall, when we did Summit Avenue, was that last year? Part of the city's improvement was to improve that railroad crossing there. It wasn't known until the time actual construction came that the rail authority contacted us and notified us that street sidewalk there is not permitted, and it requires an individual permit. So, yes, I hate to be a broken record here, but I have been working with Genesee, Wyoming, out of Texas and Florida, and I got some headway here, just trying to find the right contact individual to get this sidewalk here re-permitted. And the attempt is to get the re-permit and reconstruct it in a manner that was perhaps much safer than the original one was. I have some pictures of the original one, and we all know it was pretty rough. So that has not gone off the table either, so.
I just wanted to thank you for that little tidbit about the gentleman that writes the grants. That was really good to know that, what you said about him, how did you say it? That he's earned his own wage. That was pretty awesome.
I just, the fertilizer thing is important. I just, before we, because you've mentioned several times, and we really haven't got a handle on that.
Is there anybody that's opposed to the idea of not using fertilizers? Fertilizers in this neighborhood? I'm guessing there's no one is, right?
No one's opposed to that idea, right? And to go back to what Bert and Anthony and Brian touched on, if we had just a commitment from the neighborhood, that would go a long ways in a grant to say, hey, this neighborhood is, you know, not only are they not using phosphates, which is probably not anywhere, hopefully we're not, but they're going to make a commitment and actually put it in writing and say, this is one thing that we can do. So just as a neighborhood, I'd like to, for all of us to think about that, is actually making, like Bert said, just making something official. As small as that may seem, it goes a long way when you're writing grants.
Have you got a list for that? Have you got a list so that those who want to sign up can sign up?
We'll do that for the Lake Alice Neighborhood at the next meeting. We'll move that forward. So we will get that petition out, let's say. Yeah, I think there's any other questions? And I am tickled that this is happening. I'd love to see the city council at the same level as us. How about you guys, huh? That's a good deal. Any last questions? Let's give all of ourselves a big hand.